Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the December 18th, 2018 Board of, Charlton Board of Selectmen's Meeting. Would everybody please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So tonight, we have minutes of approval for minutes of the regular meeting from December 4th, 2018. Community relations announcements in open forum. Under appointments, we have resignations. Under appointments and resignations, we have two appointments, one for a planning board alternate and one for a part-time interim EDC director. Scheduled appointments, 6:45 PM, we have Vernon Cameron from 83 Hagerty Road. His discussion's going to be on the subdivision of budding his residents about storm, lot of runoff in the proximity to his driveway grade. At 7:00 PM, we have Liberty Utilities for Valley Green Grow and a letter of support. They'll be doing a presentation. Under new business, we have application for reduced frontage lot, special permit for Jessica Burnier at 11 King Road. And we have 2019 liquor license renewals, which the board has to vote on. We have old business committee reports, Board of Selectmen policy review, student select person report, town administrators report, and other business unknown at the time of posting. Our next meetings, All Boards Committees and Commissions Meeting, January 8th at 6:30 PM in the Senior Center. Regular Board of Selectmen's Meeting on January 15th, 2019 at 6:30 PM right here in the Selectmen's Meeting Room. Regular Board of Selectmen's Meeting on January 29th, 2019 at 6:30 PM in the Selectmen's Meeting Room. And we have an open meeting law seminar, February 5th, 2019, 6:00 PM at the Selectmen's Meeting Room. There is no executive session this evening, as far as I know, Ms. Craver. With that, what's the board's pleasure on the minutes of the regular meeting for December 4th?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Safarovich.
I move that we accept our December 4th regular meeting minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And the community relations and announcements, once we get there?
Page 12, I think.
Charlton REAS Foundation Residential Energy Assistance for Seniors, their annual fundraiser for 2019 is the Taste of the Towns Event, which will be held on Saturday, January 26th, 2019, 6:00 to 9:00 PM at St. Joseph's Church Hall, 10 H. Putnam Road Extension. The REAS lottery calendar is drawn each day in the month of January. The grand prize of $500 will be drawn at the annual Taste of the Towns Event. For more information or to obtain tickets and lottery calendars, please call 508-868-5289 or see our 2019 fundraising flyer on the website, www.reascharlton.org. The 2019 dog licenses are now available at the Town Clerk's Office by mail and now online at www.townofcharlton.net. Vital records requests are also available online. All Boards, Departments, Commissions Committee Meeting, Tuesday, January 8th, 2019, 6:30 PM, Town Hall at the Senior Center. RSVP to Mary Devlin at mary devlin dot, mary dot devlin at townofcharlton.net by January 3rd, 2019. Open Meeting Law Seminar, Tuesday, February 5th, 2019 at 6:00 PM. The snow date is going to be February 19th, 2019. RSVP to mary devlin at mary dot devlin at townofcharlton.net by January 31st, 2019. The Town Hall will be closed on December 24th, 25th, and 31st, and, and the 31st, 2018, and January 1st, 2019, for the holidays. Are there any open, any announcements from anybody on the board?
We're in open forum. Sure. I'll finish mugging in a minute. So, just as a resident, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Singer.
Thank you. So, some of you may know, can I ask Chief Maxfield to come up for a second? So, some of you may know that my daughter, Vee, has worked for many years to gather toys for, I'm out of breath, I had to run to get here, the Pediatric Trauma Unit at UMass Medical.
Five guys are back there if you need oxygen.
And I think she's done this almost every year with, I think, one miss last year, but I think like two years ago, she did like two to 300 toys. What's so important about this is there are a lot of great causes out there, toys for tots and others, and they're all good, but the toys go everywhere. They don't necessarily stay in our community. This year, Vee approached Chief Maxfield, and I think another feather in his cap is his desire to make sure that we not only help, but we help locally. So, the police department and all the residents of Charlton stepped up very big time and have donated a lot of toys. Vee couldn't come herself, she works every Tuesday night, so I'm here to say thank you to Chief Maxfield, to Officer McGrath, the police department, all the residents of Charlton for stepping up the way they did. So, you're aware of what it is. UMass Medical runs the only Level One Pediatric Trauma Unit in all of Central Mass, so they are the most sick and most severely injured children. And at this time of year, they can't be home for Christmas or the holidays, so Child Life Services Department sets up a whole Christmas village so that these children can go with their families and have some sense of normalcy, get a toy for the holidays and whatnot, and it's a, it's a critical function that's performed. So, this couldn't happen without everyone in Charlton, the police, the people who live here, so a big thanks for that. And again, this is local, so they help the children from Charlton and our neighbors, Oxford, Lester, Spencer, and whatnot. So, next year, we're going to start a little earlier, and hopefully she'll approach the fire department and the school departments, and we'll continue to make this grow. But again, it's just, this is a feel-good thing, I think, and this doesn't happen without everybody in Charlton stepping up the way they did. So, it's just a big thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you.
All the, all the toys are being delivered to the hospital tomorrow night.
We're in open forum. Is there anybody here that wants to come talk at open forum? Chief?
Sir? Excuse me. What's your?
I'll take that out of the air. That's what I'm going to do.
I'd like to introduce you to Mr. Bill Waters. Charlton resident of Burlingame Road. And the reason I bring him up is we're here to acknowledge some people in the public safety business in Charlton. November 14th, approximately quarter of 6:00 in the evening, Mr. Waters returned home to his, to his house. His son was home at the time, and his son found him on the floor in the upstairs of his house, not breathing. He'd called 911. The dispatchers did a great job initiating CPR with the individual on scene. Our guys luckily were here in town. One was on the road, was able to respond almost immediately. We had in total five fire members there that we're going to recognize tonight, and as well, we had four police officers who arrived on scene. And as you can see, for somebody who is pulseless, breathless...
I won the lottery.
Here he is today, doing much better. So, would you like to say anything?
Just got to thank the guys and the people of this town that saved my life, especially my son, who did the beginning. Put my head through the wall on the way down, and then my son heard and came downstairs and didn't really panic, I guess, from what I understand. Called 911, and they talked him through the beginning. So, for the first few minutes, he was the, he was the man. And then the fire department came and did their thing, and now I'm hearing it's like 4% survive. I said, "That's pretty cool."
So, if I could, I'd like to bring up members of the Charlton Fire Department who were on scene that day. I have a certificate of recognition for them, and I'd also like to acknowledge the members from the police department as well.
For exemplary service as a member of the Charlton Fire Department during an incident dated November 14th, 2018, your dedication and effort to serve the needs of the people result, resulted in a cardiac save for a resident of Charlton. Firefighter Justin Moy.
Captain Dean Babner.
Good to see you, guys.
If I could, I've got Officer Gary Wood. Come on down.
Thank you.
I was just an observer there on this one. Good to see you up and moving around, though.
Yep. Been working a month. Thanks, Guy.
Also on scene was Officer Linda Watson and Timothy Bolduc. Yeah, they've got a warrant arrest right now, they would have been here. And dispatchers were least okay, and Christine Bolduc was training that day, so we actually had two on, on the desk at that time. And that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
So, Chief, I think this would be an appropriate time. The townspeople are very good about funding public safety. I mean, anytime I've gone to them about adding extra police offices, or where we just went through the discussion about the, about the five firefighters that we want to put on with, you know, in the next budget season, the town has been supportive, and we truly appreciate that. And that's why we do this. This is, so, that's the first thing. The second thing is that we've had a lot of bad news about public safety people in the past two months. Just, just recently in Worcester, we lost firefighter Chris Roy. My brother-in-law is a retired district chief in Worcester. I have two nephews on, and I was scared that, that they were involved with that. But every day, these people put a lot on the line, and it's, it's the run-of-the-mill normal calls that you don't think anything's going to happen, and something does happen, whether it's at somebody's house that you're trying to put a fire out, whether you're lifting somebody and you lift the wrong way and you injure yourself that way, or primarily on the side of the road, where people are just enamored with the lights of emergency vehicles, and they, they, for whatever reason, they lose control of the car, or they're speeding, or they don't, they don't pay attention. So, I think one thing, I'd just like to have a moment of silence for firefighter Christopher Roy and keep his family and his, his daughter in your prayers. Thank you very much, and well done, Chief. Thank you.
It's all them. It's all them.
Anybody else open forum?
No. Mr. Safarovich, you had something that you wanted to bring up?
Absolutely. I'd like to, our board has sent a letter of thanks to Ms. Singer for her work. I think that would be at least what we can do as well.
Absolutely. Do you need the motion on that? I don't think so.
We'll put one in your side. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Craver, on to the next business appointments?
Yes, sir. There's a vacancy on the planning board for an alternate member due to the previous alternate becoming a full-time member of the board. The opening has been running on cable, the town's website, and the Town Hall Bulletin Board since September 6th, 2018. The planning board is recommending the appointment of John Smith. The vote for appointment must be done jointly and by roll-call vote of both boards. I'm not sure, is Mr. Smith here? Have him come back forward.
This is a joint appointment, so Patsy, you call your board to order.
I'll call it to order. Alicia Deek here.
Ross Lemansky here.
Gene Vincent here. Pass your red flag.
Okay. And Mr. Smith, thank you.
I am here.
So, do I have motion from the Board of Selectmen?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Safarovich.
Move that we appoint John Smith to the position of alternate member of the planning board?
Mm-hmm. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Noble, seconded. Any discussion from both members on the board? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor?
Roll call vote?
Roll call vote. Ms. Speedwack?
Aye.
Mr. Singer?
Aye.
Ms. Noble?
Aye.
Mr. Safarovich?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Smith as the alternate.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we need a roll call?
Yes.
Alicia Deek, aye.
Ross Lemansky, aye.
Gene Vincent, aye. Pass your red flag, aye.
Gunplay, aye.
So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks for stepping up. We appreciate it.
Yes, sir. The next is appointment part-time interim EDC director. At the board's last meeting, we were directed to post a volunteer part-time interim EDC director for the town, as Mr. Singer had said he'd heard that some residents were interested in volunteering. This was posted on the town's cable access channel, the town's website, and the Town Hall Bulletin Board on December 6th, 2018. As of the writing of this memo, we have not received any letters of interest. As you know, this came up due to Richard Vaughn approaching me with his interest. I had worked with him and asked, as asked by the Economic Development Commission and recommended, a stipend of $6,500. I've also contacted the Finance Committee Chair. He was agreeable. They are meeting tomorrow night, though, on officially to take a vote. Ms. Speedwack had concerns of appointing Mr. Vaughn to the position. As previously stated, the planning board had stated that a new town planner would need to focus on planning department issues because of the workload. The Board of Selectmen, EDC, Planning and Finance Committee agreed to revisit the issue six months after the new planner was hired. This position has not been posted as a full-time position, as the boards have not taken a definitive action yet due to not having the town planner or knowing what position it would entail. I'm looking for direction from the board.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Singer?
So, at the last meeting, I said I would try to look into it and get some answers, so I, I should just speak to both of the people in question. I won't put their names out, because I don't know how it'll go. One of them is currently an EDC member, and that person told me that they would happily and voluntarily, at no charge, take on additional roles and responsibilities and do a lot more on behalf of the EDC while we are without a director. Their only concern was, by themselves, they would happily step up and do a lot more for free, but we're just concerned about how much more. I also heard from the other person who said that they also couldn't do it as a full-time, but would also happily volunteer to cover for that person, so between the two of them on a voluntary basis at no cost to the town, they felt they could do a lot of the extra work on behalf of the EDC without having to hire someone. So, I'm truly bringing this to you and the board. If you want to pursue this, I can email all the board members their names, and we can pursue if they want to come publicly, but I'll leave it to the board how you want to act on this. But both of them said they would step up on a voluntary basis to assist.
Does anybody else from the board have anything?
Just a question, Mr. Singer. Between our last meeting and this one, was there any reason for their hesitation in sending a letter of interest?
I think a lot of what's just gone on publicly at the last meeting, I think, instead of making it a spectacle and also throwing names out, they wanted to see what the board's feeling was first. And if the board's interested in pursuing that route, then we could either reach out to them, or I could have them email directly to the board.
So, what's the, what's the, how does the board feel about this?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Safarovich.
So, I definitely appreciate, you know, them reaching out, especially at no cost to the town. Just one thing that does concern me is, I'm sure they would do a fantastic job, but it seems like they're both not committed to do it full-time and that it would be pieced feeling it together.
They were both doing it part-time.
And I think at this time, we need, would benefit the best from having a point person, a single champion, to, to work on it, to really help us develop the goals to be out there, to be that cheerleader that we need to get us started, so we can revisit it, how we want to do going forward, and put us in the best position for that. Also, kind of selfishly, I would like to, to see a good, a good people stay on the fight, the, on the Economic Development Commission, so we have a full complement of people on the board and also as a champion leading them.
If I could just answer, so the person wouldn't leave the EDC, we wouldn't lose the member? They would just voluntarily take on a lot of extra responsibilities.
Right.
And the only other question, I guess, was, I thought the hire, if we did, if we did agree to post this after tonight for a paid position, that that in itself would also be a part-time role, not full-time anyway. So, one part-timer versus two, I thought would be a wash. But again, it's whatever the board decides.
So, my, my opinion is that we go back to where we were before this all started, when Mr. Vaughn came forward, and that was, let's wait until we get the town planner in here, see who, you know, let, let the planning board hire the town planner, let's see what his skill set is and how, you know, how fast he can pick up on his side of it, and then we try and find the person that matches up against his skill set for what I consider the sales portion of the job. My view of this, and I, I, you know, I haven't really talked to the planning board about it, but my view of this is that the town planner in the EDC would be the technical nuts-and-bolts type guy, and then the, the other person that would, that would, you know, assist the EDC would be the sales champion, the person that's going out representing the community and, and talking to businesses, future businesses that want to come to town.
And that might not be the Economic Development Director for same title?
It could be, it could be a different type.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Safarovich.
The only, I, I agree with that. I think that's a great thing to pursue, but we don't have the EDC director, and the EDC director's going to take time to get online, get activated to Charlton, and there's a huge backlog of plans and other tasks for the planning department. And I think having someone in interim to help us focus, help the EDC focus, and create goals would be beneficial to the town to get it started right away, and it's something we've been kicking the can down the road for, for a number of years now, that we haven't had development. We hadn't had anyone to work. So, that's my, my hesitation is, you know, having someone with a sunset date to come in here to work on it. So, when we have a planner, when they're finally activated, up and running, that they have the best possible position, because we already have our goals developed and whatnot.
So, anybody else, sir?
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Ms. Craver, how long have we been without a full-time, a full-time planner? It's been over a year, yes?
It's been over 13 years for a full-time planner.
No.
I mean, you mean a planner. I thought you meant EDC, full-time.
No, no, no.
EDC person. I don't know. Probably a year. I don't know how long.
I won't say over.
Do you guys talk in the microphone?
Yep.
Sorry. We can't hear you.
Okay. Well, here we are, we're up here. I didn't, I thought you left, Patsy. Just a quick question, how long have we been without a town planner now?
It would be 13 months.
13. Thank you, Patsy. So. Ms. Craver?
At, at this point, I mean, I don't see that it's necessary to appoint someone as the EDC director. This came, this whole conversation came about because someone stepped up and said, "I'm interested in doing it." If there's controversy or whatever, and that there's not a need, if there's members of the EDC that's willing to stand up, step up and do more work, you know, that may be also a viable solution. Right now, the EDC is being kind of co-staffed between myself and the present planner. We're both attending the meetings. I've become the point person for economic development that doesn't have anything to do with planning, and Bill has been graciously coming in and just giving them an update on what's happening with the project. So, the EDC has stayed in the loop. The members are active, so if you're not sure what to do, I would, you might think about going back to the EDC. The EDC's last conversation was that they, I don't think they anticipated that there would be any questions about, you know, how to move forward, and it sounded like a good idea. You could always go back and ask them if there's people that are willing to do more, and I'm sure that the town pla, the interim town planner, myself, would continue to, to work with them, just given another option.
It's, it's my understanding that we are still down a member on the EDC, because we had someone resign very recently?
So, there's another opportunity.
Resigned.
Mike Lowly resigned? So, how many members do we have on the EDC now?
So, it would be four or five. We have five altogether, so there's four there.
So, there's only four members?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Right. And one of the people that had said that they were interested in, in assisting and volunteering had told me that she was interested, so I would like to go back to maybe those people and ask them if they would be interested in joining. They meet on quarterly at this point, so it's, it's not, actually, we're starting to meet monthly.
Okay.
So, we are meeting monthly.
I, I like where you went with that, because that could serve two purposes at once, filling the EDC seat, as well as the same person we've hired to help with the additional duties and try and keep, keep us covered, attend chamber events and whatnot to get us the exposure.
Well, I'm glad you brought that up, because that, I guess, it's important to let you know that some of that is already happening, so there's not a huge void. Many of the members on the EDC do attend the business meetings in their own capacities in what they do in their regular professional jobs. So, they generally, there's actually a portion that we put into the agenda where they come back and they talk about meetings that they've gone to, and then they also let the EDC know about other meetings that are happening.
One of the reasons why I, I like the idea of the EDC director, I go to, unfortunately, I think sometimes too many chamber events, Worcester Chamber, Quarter 9 Chamber, because we cover all of Central Mass, and what I run into regularly are either EDC directors or assistant EDC directors, who are there specifically on behalf of their town, with a table for the town, and they're literally just front and center. We run our town like a business, and they're out there recruiting businesses.
Those tend to be more community development directors, EDC directors, that are, they're more full-time, and they're, they're from the larger towns, too.
Yeah.
Or you, for, for our size town and, and smaller, it's generally the town planner and the, or the administrator manager that shows up.
Okay. So, what is the consensus of the board?
Through the chair.
Ms. Speedwack, well, hold on.
Just to comment that I do agree with everything that you said, and I would like to wait and see, you know, wait for us to hire a town planner and then have them kind of drive the bus, if you will. That was a good idea.
So, I would agree with both of you to go that route first, but at the same time, tying what Ms. Craver said, we're going to pursue that. We have someone already on the EDC willing to step up on a voluntary basis, and a potential another candidate to fill that seat who would also help, we might fill all of our needs, at least for the interim.
Excellent.
Well, I think if there's a, if I may.
Go ahead.
If there's a member of the EDC that's willing, then perhaps what they do is have the conversation with the EDC on what they'd like to be doing and have the EDC authorize them. And maybe it's a couple of different people that are doing different pieces to speak for the EDC out in public.
Like having different point people.
Versus an appointment here for an EDC director.
Good chair.
Uh, Ms. Noble?
I'd like to make a, a recommendation that we send Mr. Vaughn a thank you letter.
Mm-hmm.
And explain that we're going to go a different route at this point.
Temporarily.
Temporarily. Um, we reach out to the individuals who are interested in economic development, ask them to please join and take that vacant seat on the EDC. And, um, and find out where we are in the, uh, in the process of hiring a planning director. Because a lot seems to hinge on that these days.
Okay.
I think that.
No pressure, guys. Just want to know where we are.
They may, are they at interview just right now? Patsy?
Patsy and Jean, are you interviewing now or have you called it down to people you want to interview?
We, uh, we had a cancellation for an interview. However, we have, um, we have some thoughts on some new recruiting methods. We're working on that. We, we hope to.
Okay, yeah, just curious. It's, you, you, you have to get the right person and you guys have to be comfortable with them.
Well, the problem is we have no, we get no resumes. We, uh, architects. We just, we're not, we're not, we're, we're pretty desperate.
Mm-hmm.
And we're open up to anybody even like less experienced and everything else. So we're actively looking. It's just the availability and the, the, the desire to maybe come in to, in the middle of our, we have a lot going on in town. Maybe it kind of scares people away, but.
They want to let it calm down before they put their resume in. Excellent.
March, March is the big annual conference and every planner in the whole state will be at Holy Cross.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we will be handing out flyers.
Thanks, Patsy. Thanks, Jean. Um, so is that consensus on the board or whether the Mr. Vaughn thanking him and, um, and we move on from there?
Yeah, so adding as an agenda item for the next EDC meeting is just to, you know, invite both people and see what, um, how, how can they assign responsibilities.
Okay, excellent.
Um, and we will be seeing the EDC at the all boards meeting on January eighth as well.
Mm-hmm.
So we can have the brief discussion there. Thank you.
Did that cover everything for everybody under that? Okay. Ms. Craver, six forty-five.
Okay, um.
We're a little behind.
I have another appointment.
Okay.
But since we're behind, um, let's do the scheduled appointments and then we could come back to an appointment for the town assistant town accountant, please? Okay, um, for the six forty-five, Vernon Cameron, eighty-three Hagerty Road, subdivision abutting as residence, storm water runoff proximity to the driveway grade. Are you here?
Mr. Cameron.
Present, I am here.
Mr. Cameron has asked for time on the board's agenda to discuss the subdivision that abuts his property. Specifically, the storm water runoff and the driveway that runs the length of his southeast side property line.
Yes, please.
He feels the driveway is safety ha, is a safety hazard and needs to be addressed. We did explain to him that this was not under the Board of Selectmen's authority, but he wanted to be heard. We've notified the planning board, conservation commission, zoning board, highway department and building commissioner of tonight's meeting. Kurt Meskis, the building commissioner, stated that Mr. Cameron has spoken to many departments, including his. He offered what assistance he could under his office's silo of responsibility, which is limited. Mr. Meskis stated that the project being referred to is not a subdivision. It was at one time a propo, uh, proposed subdivision, but was withdrawn. Three frontage lots were substituted in the same land area. Um, all the subject, all subject to notices and public hearing of which Mr. Cameron was notified with copies of the proposal to the applicable departments for comment. Mr. Meskis will not be present for the meeting tonight. Um, the interim planner, Bill Scanlon, stated that he has spoken with Clay Bear, Blair, the developer of the house behind Mr. Cameron's home. Mr. Blair said he would contact Mr. Cameron and arrange to have one of his contractors meet to, um, onsite to review the same. And Highway Superintendent Foskett, uh, said he would be there as well.
Oh, awesome. So I, I have a little bit of background on this. The original subdivision was done by Joe Colasano.
That's correct, sir.
And Mr. Colasano didn't develop this, that those, those lots or that area for, for a reason because they were tough and, and.
Lot of ledge.
And he'd run out of money. So there were a couple of other gentlemen, uh, whom I won't name, that bought them. And the economy tanked and they ended up, uh, one of them was an employer of Mr. Blair's. And Mr. Blair ended up with, with the lots and he was going to put a subdivision road in there if I remember correctly.
Yes, Jax Lane.
Yeah, and then the, the other thing I remember that was a little bit different about the property, to put the road in there was a, or maybe it's a driveway now. There was a deep cut against one of the house lots that was sitting there. Um, you know, they, they had to dig down quite a bit to, to get to the back of one of those lots. But anyway, the water table's high and, and it sounds like it's causing problems.
Oh, it's definitely is. And, um, I, I have some pictures and some material if you want to look it over. I'll try to be as brief as possible. I'm sorry, I only have one copy. It's pretty expensive. So. It was a pretty good introduction and, uh, and I pretty much agree with everything that you, that, uh, Robin had said. However, um, that doesn't help my situation at all. Um, obviously, on Mr. Cameron, I've been a resident of Charlton for eighteen years at eight, at eighty-three Hagerty Road. I've seen construction up there. I've seen heavy excavating. I've seen, um, drill and blast. It's, it's just been kind of a nightmare ever since this whole thing started. But I really want to talk about when I first moved in eighteen years ago. We'll talk about that first. And there's some pictures that goes with the landscape there. Uh, I had an issue with, uh, storm water runoff right from the start. And the highway department and the selectmen came down and they had some ideas. Well, I contacted Charlton Landscaping and I had them come down and have them give me an assessment. And they recommended that I build up my property on the front. That's the photo number one, I believe, or photo number two, that's. So I had about a hundred and ten yards of fill, um, delivered with forty, forty yards of loom. And I spread it out nicely and I had a nice little gully off to the southwest corner where a lot of that water would accumulate. To keep it away from my drain field, my septic drain field. Um, and of course, after, after about a year or so, I had the final coat of asphalt put on my driveway, on the base coat. And I had it swaled a little bit to the right so that it would run down the driveway, the edge of the driveway into the stream in the backyard. That seemed to be working just fine. So let's fast forward to May of last year. Um, we did get a notice in the mail. My wife and I came up, we looked at the plans. They were very similar to the plans that have been on the books since two thousand and five. In fact, I remember when Alan Gordon first printed those plans in two thousand and five. I came up and looked at it. I said, ah, we have no objection to this. Uh, I have a copy of those plans if anybody wants to look at them. And I don't understand how they got around the hundred and seventy-five foot frontage that these homes are supposed to have. I don't understand that. If you look at this plan, which is fairly recent, and I didn't get this all that long ago. It's still on the books, not Hagerty Landing. Hagerty Landing didn't exist until I think around September of last year. So the plans that, so anyways, the point of contention that I'm making here, sir, is you've took the original set of plans. Basically threw them out the window. And now someone suggested it was a variance. Okay, well, my idea of a variance and, and I think a lot of people's idea of a variance would be. Okay, um, this house is going to have an, an extra detached garage. Or it's going to have another wing on the other side of this house. Jax Way was on the, was on that books. It was supposed to be a cul-de-sac. It wasn't supposed to be three individual driveways. And oh, by the way, anything that's considered more than two homes by Massachusetts general law on the subdivision is called a subdivision. Okay, so let's fast forward to May twenty seventeen. Letters were again sent out to all butters. There's a notice of intent there from Mr. Blair. Fast forward to October twenty seventeen. Now, we went up, we looked at plans. Yeah, no problem. There's a guy out there with an excavator with a chainsaw and he's cutting down trees and it's like, so I went out and I asked him, I said, hey, what are you guys doing? Oh, we're clearing some lots here to bring in some driveways. Oh, great. That's when I started coming up and seeing, visiting different offices up here. From the planning board to the conservation people. They know me quite well. Um. It didn't seem like I was getting anywhere, so I requested to attend the planning board meeting. And the planning board meeting was the planning board members, myself and Graves Engineering. I, I voiced my concern about the storm water flooding my septic drain field. And there's some photos of it before and after. Um, you can all look at those. Uh, and the Graves Engineering guy said that the storm water runoff would diminish after the grass was grown. Well, that's a bunch of hooey. In my opinion. Okay, so now that's, that was referred to picture number two. So not to mention the fact that I'm getting all this extra runoff water that's coming from the subdivision. I'm not too crazy about the proximity and the height and the grade of the driveway that runs around my property. My property line to his property line is eighteen feet off my pool. And roughly a little bit more than that, maybe twenty feet for the house because it, the driveway slopes up and goes around the corner a little bit. But you can see that photo. You can see the grade that's there on that driveway. And there is nothing to prevent the vehicle, for whatever reason, to come off that driveway and strike my house or hit my pool. And God forbid if somebody's in the yard, it's going to, it, it, it's going to be a catastrophe.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Mr. Saffron.
Um, in my experience, uh, I'm currently a civil engineer and I get a lot of questions on storm water issues. Is there anything that our board can do to help in this case? Because I'm not sure, because if, if, if they're directing storm water runoff onto your property, they wasn't there before. That's a form of trespassing, which would be a civil matter between private property.
Yes, sir, it is. And, um, I've got some material to read to back that up, but thank you very much for pointing that out. Um, so there are some pictures of the driveway and I've pinpointed, you know, the height and the grade. And there's nothing there. And I talked to Mr. Blair. He came out to my property on my birthday, January thirtieth of last year. And I've talked to him and, oh yeah, you know, Mr. Cameron, we'll put some boulders there, we'll put some, I, I asked for a privacy fence. And, oh no, that's not going to stop a vehicle from leaving the driveway and coming down onto your property. I go, okay, I understand you don't want to buy a fence. How about some boulders? How about some big rocks? How about something? So that in case someone does leave this driveway, and the driveway is very long, it runs the whole length of my side yard. It's got to be almost four hundred feet. So you can get going pretty fast in four hundred feet. And I've noticed some individuals have driven pretty fast up that driveway. So there is a, a triple A, um, driving distance calculator. You may look at that. And, uh, I, I think that kind of spells it out. I'm left, I'm, I'm less than forty feet from that driveway. So if somebody comes off that driveway and they're, and they're at a good clip, there's nothing preventing them from fit, from hitting my house or hitting the pool. That's not right. Okay, let's just continue on. I don't even want to mention about the planning board meeting. It didn't go all that well. I wasn't too happy with it, so we'll just skip over that. Uh, like I said, I did meet with Mr. Blair. Uh, I asked for proper drainage. Wow. This guy said I have no place to drain it to. Are you kidding me? He had excavators back there. He had concrete, pre-cast concrete drains, all the piping. He had everything he needed to put some drainage in there. And he didn't. I asked him about doing something, about getting the water away from my drain field. Sorry, empty promises. Nothing was done. And that's not right. I'm a resident. I've been there eighteen years. All right. So I did call Mr. Blair again, talked about the grading problem with the driveway and about the storm water runoff. He deferred me to his brother Joel. There's, um, email that I'd sent with him with some attachment pictures of the driveway. I never heard from Mr. Joel again. I called him back. I said, well, what, what are you guys going to do for me? Oh, the driveway's not done yet. That was in March. Nothing. Okay, so then I went back to the planning board to express my frustrations. Mr. Scanion was very, um, patient with me. Uh, it might have been more than once that I wasn't a gentleman going in there. Uh, he's very frustrated at this point. But anyways, at this point now, we're talking about the spring of twenty eighteen. And not only am I getting flooded in the backyard, but my septic drain system is getting flooded. My, my driveway is getting flooded. I'm noticing that all this excess water is washing across where my well is. Can't have that. Cannot have that. So I took it upon myself, and I also noticed there was a lot of sheen of oil in the puddles in front of my house. That's my water supply. That's my portable water supply from my family. So I took it upon myself to dig a trench and put my own drainage in. Well, you know how long it takes to dig a trench, a hundred and seventy feet long? The whole summer.
Yeah.
So it was hundreds of hours of, of man hours, labor hours, plus whatever it cost me for material. And I'm not making a big deal about that. I'm trying to protect my well. So we can look at worksheets about what water does to your well and what it does to your septic. I think everybody's well aware of that. I have some EPA worksheets that also explain in depth what storm water runoff, the potential of what it has for pathogens and pathogens in the water. I don't think we need to cover all of that, but it's all in there.
Mr. Cameron, I, you know, as, uh, we, we're giving you a forum to talk about this and, and I understand it's a big problem for you. The, the problem is this board has absolutely nothing to do with this. But what happened, the last note that I have here is from interim planner, Bill Scanlon. He stated that he had spoken with Clee Blair, the developer of the houses behind yours. He said, Mr. Blair said he would contact Mr. Cameron and arrange to have one of his contractors meet onsite to review the issue. Highway Superintendent Foskett would be there all, as well. Has that meeting happened?
Uh, I did talk to him January thirtieth of this year.
This is, this, this note that I have here is from December eleventh, twenty eighteen.
No, sir.
Okay, so were you aware that they, that, that, that Bill Scanlon had talked with Clee Blair at all?
No, sir, I was not.
Okay, so here's, here's what I would like to do, okay? And since we have two fine members from the planning board here also, um, this, this has been a long, long time problem. When we give reduced frontage lots, okay? And they drive that driveway down, you know, especially a lot of the lots that they do reduce frontage lots on are less than desirable. Uh, and they're trying to get away from the problems that he's having right here now. So if, if, and I, I'm just going to go by the note that we have here, Mr. Cameron.
Yes, sir.
If you could please get ahold of the planning board and Bill Scanlon, okay? And have, and have them contact Mr., Mr., um.
Clee Blair, yes, sir.
We will make sure that the person that we're responsible for, that reports to the, the town administrator and board of selecting, Mr. Foskett is there with his professional eye.
Yes.
And we'll try and get this remedied. I'm sure Mr. Blair, who sells a lot of houses in town and sells a lot of houses in the rest of the county. Is not interested in having his name, you know, come up in a public forum.
Well, I'm not doing any character assassination. Well, I'm not doing any character assassination, yes, sir.
No, 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 and I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that either. I'm not saying character assassination or anything. I'm just saying, he, I'm sure that he would like to have this problem ironed out, especially where he told our town, our interim town planner, that he's gonna be there to have a meeting and, and it hasn't happened yet. So, Patsy?
We just met with Clee, we, we, we'll, we have been working with him and we'll make sure that he is reminded.
If you could please facilitate that and, and, and if you could also make sure that, that we, we tell Robin when the meeting is gonna take place so Jerry can be up there. I think if we can, if we can do that, Mr. Cameron, I think maybe we can get some satisfaction out of this.
I, yes, I am open to any sort of assistance that I can get in this matter.
So if, if I told you that we had this letter before and, and we might have been able to just move, move forward a little further, but thank you for the history on this, okay, and, and keep us, you know, abreast of what's going on.
Yes, sir, I, I realize your agenda's full, but I do want to make one more quick note. I did have the superintendent of the highway department come out and meet me at the house. He was a very nice gentleman. I found him to be genuine and honest and very sincere. And I can't tell, can't say everything, I'm not gonna divulge everything that was said in, in our conversation. But I'll just highlight a couple of the things. I believe him to be an honest and genuine person, he stated that the excessive stormwater swamping and washing across my well has him very concerned and very worried. Obviously, there's a real threat to the well water quality and the possible water contamination. He also stated that the stormwater runoff calculations, in his opinion, not mine, were grossly underestimated and corrective measures during construction could have prevented this problem.
I think the real problem there is when they're doing a single lot like that and it's not a subdivision, there is no stormwater calculation that comes before the planning board. And chances are that is what the developer knew, and that's why he went from six lots to three and he kept up, he kept away from doing stormwater management.
Right.
So, but, as Selectman Safarovic brought up, the, the water problem, he can't shed water onto your property, number one. It's a civil issue, okay? And he can't, and he can't contaminate your well with any, with any water. And so I think that it behooves Mr. Blair, he's not here to defend himself, but it behooves Mr. Blair to, to work with the planning board, who gave him, you know, the okay on these lots and with the, and with the, the highway superintendent to get it corrected for you.
Yes, sir.
And, and we'd appreciate it if you would keep us abreast of what's going on.
Oh, most definitely, if I have to come back and give another little small presentation, I'll be more than happy to do that.
Thank you very much.
Um, but I just don't understand, how did he get the clearance because the frontage wasn't there?
Mr. Chair, I don't think this is the correct form to address those issues.
Yeah, I think probably on that, Mr. Cameron, you, you can probably ask the town planner to go over rules and regulations for
Okay.
Or even members of the planning board might be able to just explain to him generic terms here before you leave, okay?
Certainly.
I'll walk up with you, I'll, I'll.
All right, very good, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't know if you want that material or not, or?
We'll, we'll give it back to you and then, success in working this out.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you all.
Thank you for your time.
Take care.
Mr. Craver?
Yes, sir. Mike, would you mind letting me just do a quick, uh, can I have five minutes? Okay, before you get started, we have a department head who could go home.
Can we set up our?
That would be great. Mr. Chair, if you don't mind?
Go ahead, Ms. Craver.
Um, I'd like to go back to the appointments and resignation. Um, I did send you an email that I was working with the HR up until just before this meeting. Um, we had, as you know, we've been working very hard to get interviews for an assistant town accountant to be able to support the finance director. Um, Jessica, HR, and I held, and Debbie Chigurini held preliminary interviews for an assistant town accountant. Um, and then the finance director and treasurer collector did the second round, which was more technical. Um, the finance director has made the recommendation for Ashley Ingram. Um, so if you don't mind, I'd just like to read from an email that HR provided. So she says, hi, Robin, I would like to recommend, along with Donna Figlio and Joanne Sevanick, um, who held second round interviews that the select board appoint Ashley Ingram to the position of assistant town accountant, pending the successful outcome of background, background checks. She would be paid twenty-six dollars per hour in keeping with the posted range and average pay for the same position in other comparable communities. She has a bachelor of science degree in business administration, specifically in accounting from Western New England College, and six years of experience in the accounting field, which includes a diverse range of accounting responsibilities. Ashley demonstrated through the interview process to have a knowledge, have the knowledge and technical capability needed to be effective, as well as the customer service and professional approach we are looking for in a new team member for the town. So I would recommend that the board appoint Ashley Ingram as the assistant town accountant at twenty-six dollars per hour.
Do a motion.
I would make a motion to accept the recommendations of the town administrator and hire Ashley Ingram at twenty-six dollars per hour in keeping with the posted range and average pay for the same position.
This is for the assistant town accountant?
Yes. Yes.
Second, Mr. Scanyon. We have motion of second. Is there any discussion?
Did we need to put an pending clause in there? I think you said something about pending.
Um, pending the background check.
Pending the criminal background check.
amend in a second, okay? We have a motion and amendment and a second and an amended, amendment, any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair? If this is gonna involve any conversation and discussion, I'm gonna walk out.
Uh, that's probably gonna involve some discussion. Okay?
Okay. Are you ready for me to start?
We are.
Okay. Mr. Chair, Liberty Utilities has asked to meet with the board to discuss their plan to initially provide natural gas distribution service to Valley Green Grow and a potential subsequent opportunity to expand distribution system to other portions of Charlton. They are requesting that the board support their regulatory filing before the Massachusetts Department of Public Utilities to provide natural gas transportation service to the facility located at forty-four Old Worcester Road, L Turner Drive in Charlton. Typically, this support would be in the form of a certified vote of the board. Below is a draft motion for your consideration. Um, also attached is a copy of the presentation they will be making. Um, and just for reference, I believe you've already done this with the LNG company, which also needed your support letter to proceed.
Okay. So with that, gentlemen?
Good evening.
Good evening.
You have a, you have a presentation, if you can introduce yourselves.
We do, we do. Um, we'll start off, I'm Mark Smith, I'm president of Liberty Utilities Massachusetts. Uh, with me tonight is RJ Ritchie, he's our senior general counsel. Jim Carey, senior manager of government affairs. Mike Petit is director of business development, and Gary Monroe is our director of operations and engineering. So I'd like to start off by thanking you for giving us the time to talk with you tonight. Um, we really have a, a couple of things to, to go through. As one, we'd like to explain our role and what our plans are to provide natural gas to Valley Green Grow. Also, to answer any questions you might have about either our plans or the process and so forth. And again, to ask for your authorization so we could move forward with the Public Utility Commission. One thing I did want to point out to start with though, is we are Liberty Utilities Massachusetts and we are in no way connected with Liberty Energy Trust, which is the group that's from Pennsylvania that's proposing the LNG plant on Route twenty. We're separate from them. So we have a brief presentation, we all have a little piece of it we're gonna kind of run through. And when we get done, we'd certainly open to any questions you have. So, um, okay. Okay, first is of talking to you a little bit about our company's structure. Liberty Utilities is, is, we're, we're a subsidiary of Algonquin Power and Utilities Corp., which is based out of Oakville, Ontario, just outside of Toronto. They are publicly traded on the New York Stock Exchange and the Toronto Stock Exchange. And currently, we have about eight billion dollars in assets. The Liberty Utilities, the piece that we belong to, is, is really, that's the regulated utility piece of, of Algonquin. And we have over thirty-three electric and gas and water utility, serving approximately seven hundred and sixty thousand customers, and we operate in twelve states. All of Liberty Utilities is in the United States. Liberty Power, which is owner-operator power generation facilities, that, those are both in Canada, in the six, uh, six provinces, six states in the US. Very heavily looking and investing into the renewables and the clean energy, a lot of solar, a lot of wind and so forth, so that's kind of, we're almost about fifty-fifty of, of the company. Really, more closer to home though, Liberty Utilities, New England Natural Gas Company, that's, that's us folks here. Um, we are based in southeastern Massachusetts in Fall River, we've got approximately fifty-five thousand customers. And we serve, cover the towns of Fall River, North Alamo, Plainville, Somerset, Swansea, and Westport. New England Gas Company's been around since about eighteen forty-seven, so it's been a long, very established company. And we've been principally in that area the whole time, so. So with that thought, I'm gonna turn it over to Jim, who's gonna cover a little more.
Hi, good evening. My name's Jim Carey and I'm the senior manager of government affairs of the company, and I just wanted to talk a little bit about the advantages of natural gas. Liberty Utilities is committed to providing our customers and communities we serve with safe, reliable, and efficient natural gas service. In terms of the product that we deliver, natural gas is the cleanest of all fuels. Over the past eight years, our company is an active participant in mass save with the other electric and gas utilities here in the state. And we're privileged to say that our energy efficiency program have been cited nationally for the past eight years as the best in the nation. So, so we, we, we're very responsive to our customers in terms of safety, the product that we deliver, and our energy efficiency programs. And lastly, one of the big advantages of natural gas is that the fuel is competitive with others. And there's, there's no need to prepay, monitor, and schedule delivery, so it's, it's, it's right there to serve you. In terms of consistent gas supply, ninety-eight percent of the supply is domestically produced. And the transmission and distribution systems crisscross our nation and region to provide reliable gas service. Natural gas is the fuel of choice in our service territory and the region, and what you'll see is with natural gas, uh, new construction thrives, economic development thrives, because that's what businesses and homeowners are looking for. In terms of the Valley Green Grow project, you won't see all over the road daily deliveries of fuel trucks there to power the plant. So I think that's one big advantage of putting in this short distribution system. And lastly, in terms of the versatility and cleanliness of gas, it's, uh, it's, 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 uh, in, in terms of the environment, we're about thirty-three percent less in carbon emissions than other fuels. As far as the versatility of natural gas, you can use it to heat your home or business, domestic hot water. Businesses like it because it, it does industrial processes, it can generate electricity for such, something like a co-gen unit. And what's very popular, especially in the rural community of Westport, is it's a great way to have emergency backup electric generation. We've found over the past four or five years, we've had hundreds of customers who are putting in emergency generators. And what's an advantage there is it's a safe way to, to, to site and install a backup generation system. You're not refueling it, you know, a couple of times a day, and it's by code, they're, they're very safe to install. So that's all I have, and I'll turn it over to the next presenter.
Thanks, Jim. My name is RJ Ritchie and I'm senior corporate counsel for Liberty Utilities, New England Natural Gas Company Corp. Um, taking it from Jim's more sort of macro view on the benefits of natural gas and drilling down to a more granular look at this particular project that we're here for today. As Mark Smith mentioned earlier, this is a discreet and dedicated project to that's going to be designed to expedite service to Valley Green Grow at Old Worcester Road while at the same time uh, being designed in such a way so that it should be able, that will be able to accommodate a potential future expansion into the rest of Charlton. I'm not an engineer, but I just want to speak very briefly on some of the, the major components of the project. There's going to be an interconnection to the existing Tennessee gas pipeline that originates down in Texas and Louisiana and runs through the southeastern United States uh, through the town of Charlton, so that, that major interstate pipeline is already there on the property that Valley Green Grow intends to purchase. And there will be an interconnect from that pipeline to, um, uh, facilities that'll be owned and operated by Liberty Utilities. That'll include a pipe on a connection to a meter station, as well as a distribution pipe, and then obviously a customer, a customer meter for Valley Green Grow. Um, as Mark alluded to earlier, and then as I believe Town Administrator Craver mentioned as well, uh, we're here really looking for evidence of town support for a filing that Liberty Utilities will be making to the Massachusetts Department of Public Utilities in Boston. They are our principal in-state regulator. And we'll, we, we will be making a filing, as long as we, as things go according to plan, we, we would be making a filing with the Mass Department of Public Utilities, asking the Department of Public Utilities to approve a special contract that we are in the process of negotiating with Valley Green Grow. And the evidence of town support will be included in that filing to basically show that we've, um, we're working with the town and that the town supports that filing. Uh, briefly on to the next slide. Um, as I mentioned previously, it's a, this part of the project is for the interconnection to a single contracted customer um, who will be responsible for all reasonable costs, and that's Valley Green Grow. The meter station and the pipe are conveniently located on private property and therefore that'll minimize any, um, safety or, or environmental issues that should, um, and finally, uh, Valley Green Grow is going to be responsible for providing natural gas supply. So basically, what our, what Liberty Utilities' role in this is, is basically to act as a intermediary in between the interstate pipeline and we will be the ones delivering or distributing that natural gas from the pipeline to our customer, Valley Green Grow. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Gary Monroe.
Uh, good, good evening. My name is Gary Monroe, I'm the director of operations and engineering for New England Natural Gas Company of Liberty Utilities. And I'll talk a little bit about the safety of our operations and the robust attention we do pay to safe operations and public safety. We have a very rugged and rigorous regulatory requirement from the federal government and the state part of Public Utilities to comply with certain regulations on operations, on design, factors of safety, and making sure that what we develop and build is gonna operate safely. We have an operations and maintenance plan, it's very extensive. It's actually available online and my folks are able to see it everywhere they go for operations activities, standards, and any type of reaction to operations needs. So that's a very effective way to be able to keep a communication out in the field. The, the folks that are out in the field are also fully qualified through a program provided by the Northeast Gas Association. It's operated qualification, that we do classes and training, but to verify that they are trained and able to do the work, they have to do online testing with a computer, and then in addition to that, some hands-on testing for pipe fitting and pipe manipulation so that they prove to us that they understand the work before they're actually out in the field doing the work. So that, that is a part of guaranteed quality of work. The, the training for pipeline safety and first responders is something that we've reached out to the chief already from the fire department, and we've communicated through email, and we will talk to him in the future. But we can assist him in training and the Northeast Gas Association again But we can assist him in training, and the, uh, Northeast Gas Association again has an online training program that we've been given permission to provide to the town of Charlton, and that Fire Department to be able to view it. Any one of those, uh, fantastic folks that came through earlier tonight would be able to view that online. And it talks about the gas and the metering and certain response requirements, and the fact of what it smells like and all that. So that's a benefit for anyone to be educated in learning that. The, uh, emergency response here, the one thing that we will have is, where my office is, we have a control room. And in that control room, we monitor our whole distribution system. We're local. And we would be able to monitor this system live, real-time, and it would tell us how it's operating, it would tell us the flow rates. And within this design, we're actually going to create the capability to shut it down remotely from that location through communication systems, so that if there was an anomaly that was really dramatic, or something that was going to cause a risk, we would be able to shut it off. Which is a real safety feature for the fact that this is a single pipeline to a customer. They would be shut off, and we'd have to work with that, but it's a smaller area, and the shut-off would maintain safety. I would anticipate it does not happen, because we actually, we actually operate five stations like that photographs saw in our system, and, uh, we haven't had to shut off any of them. They, we monitor them, we annually inspect them, we go out there typically either weekly or monthly and check them for defenses, for security, for the doors, make sure things are operating correctly. So we're very, very much involved with the operation of these facilities. The photograph is a photograph of what a control room would look like. We are actually improving ours right now with new computer systems, and those computer systems would communicate out to here too, on a real-time basis. So that really is a safety aspect of what we're looking to do here. And the current plan is just that one single customer and a simple installation from that station to their, uh, meter.
Good evening. I'm Mike Patey, I'm the Director of Business Development for Liberty Utilities. We've been predominantly focused about the VGG system, uh, planning and providing to VGG. We're going to talk a little more about potential activity beyond the facility as well. As we've noted up here, the arrangement with VGG is that they're responsible for a part of the cost of the meter station. And the way that it's going to be designed is going to allow for expansion capability. That's a significant advantage to the town with the potential to, to access other portions of town. We're going to recover the cost of the meter station from VGG and VGG only. So, uh, that significantly creates the, uh, added opportunity to expand beyond that system more economically, which has been one of the hurdles to bring natural gas to the town of Charlton. We would be responsible for payment of property taxes to the town as part of expansion. As Jim pointed out, we have a nationally recognized energy efficiency program that allows customers to reduce their overall energy costs, which is a good thing. The other thing about natural gas deliveries to commercial and industrial and residential is that that reduces truck traffic on the town roads. There's no propane trucks or oil trucks being delivered, natural gas is underground and it's delivered directly to homes and between businesses. Jim also stole some thunder. There's increased economic opportunity, we believe, with natural gas. We think most businesses prefer natural gas, which hopefully would create more opportunities for the town to grow that area. The, I think, uh, we touched on this before, but the meter station design is contemplated to facilitate expansions in our greenhouse. We're going to design it and size it so that it's going to size for additional load, have no additional cost. As R.J. mentioned, we have a process in Massachusetts to go to the DPU for, uh, citing of certain things. To, um, to go beyond the greenhouse, we would have a subsequent filing with the Mass DPU. There's a multi-level component that would have, that we would go through to look at expansions beyond the existing, beyond the greenhouse. The prime drivers of all economics, and the components of that are, we would look at customer support, whether that's, um, town, schools, commercial buildings, residents. Then we would look at the load associated with that activity and the revenue it's going to generate. We'd look at design, and then come up with some preliminary costs. The economics bore out, we would bring a filing in front of the Massachusetts DPU and look to expand it as far as, as we could go. We'd, that would probably go in stages. Uh, we'd have initial build-out and then subsequent build-out beyond that. Part of that plan that we would have to go with the DPU is we would have to look at natural gas supply that would accompany the, uh, and that would be something that we would have to develop. Customer load is not level. If you think of your own homes, you burn a lot more energy in the wintertime. So a fuel supply plan would have to be flexible to be able to accommodate those seasonal variations. The, uh, again, VGG would be, uh, economically responsible for the initial costs. So the incremental costs should be significantly reduced as opposed to building a new meter station. I think the other key point is that all of our costs of service, both on the gas supply side and on the infrastructure side, are approved by the Massachusetts DPU. So, uh, those rates are not something that we set. Those are, you know, we have certain costs that we incur when we go in, trying to come to you, and we've got certain, not something that we have full control over. I think that probably about wraps up our presentation, unless anyone has anything else to add. And we're certainly open to try to answer any questions that the board have.
My, uh, I'm gonna start because, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk about the elephant in the room, which is, uh, I know one of the things that's probably on everybody's mind in this room is that the bottle would have up in lines. So the first thing we want to know is, um, what is your safety, your current safety, or what I want to know, what's your current safety record in your, in your distribution network that you have down the southeast corner of the, of the, of the state? The second is, uh, what's, and more, more for you, um, with, uh, from operations would be, what's the current pressure in Tennessee Valley Pipeline? And then what are you going to reduce it to, to service VGG? So those are the three questions, I guess. They're pretty easily answered.
Well, the safety record is something I'm very proud of. I've, uh, actually doing some research right now because we're being, uh, reviewed on our pro- performance of safety, and I can tell you that there have been no fines and, from what I've found for ten years. I, I really looked in detail for the last five, actually six, and then beyond that, I couldn't find any either. Uh, we've had, we have a very good relationship with the DPU. We have a couple of letters that, uh, they had some concerns that we dealt with. Uh, no fines were, or violations were identified, and, uh, we work with them and resolve their concerns. Our system is, one of the things I always tell the president is, we're small. And the beauty of being small is everybody knows everybody. And as you all know each other, and when something happens, you all know about it. I do run the operation, but all my team works together, and if I'm working on something here, and it may affect someone that's not in the room, they will know about it. And I'm very, very pleased that I'm able to say that. These larger companies, it's a little tougher to communicate. There's no doubt the bigger you are, the more folks there are. The pressure and the, the lateral, I think Michael could actually speak to that, but I, we will be taking that down to ninety-nine PSI as the pressure we would deliver to VGG.
The, the Tennessee Pipeline maximum operating pressure is approximately seven hundred and fifty. And it ranges, at least the data that we have, it probably ranges on the low end to maybe three hundred to seven fifty, and that varies depending upon operating conditions on the pipeline.
And we're probably closer to the high end because the compressor station's up on cotton type of wood.
Yes. You're downstream of the compressor.
Correct. I just want to add one other point that one of our other utilities been in the paper for lots of labor discord and issues. And I want to assure you that we have excellent labor relations. We do not have those type of issues at all.
To the chair. Thank you. You briefly mentioned that there had been some concerns by the DPU, but you had addressed those. Could you share what some of those concerns were? Would you mind?
Well, one of them, it was a, uh, inside a house, we had done some temporary repairs on some piping that had some corrosion. And we didn't react fast enough to replace the piping, and there was a concern that we should be quicker. And since then, we've, uh, very, very been aggressively repairing those immediately or within a day. As a matter of fact, I instituted a policy that to do a temporary repair, as this one brought up back in twenty-fourteen, either myself or my two managers have to approve it. No one can do it on their own without approval. And, you know, my phone's here, it's on all the time. No phone calls right now, obviously, but, uh, my two managers play the same way. And so they would have to be called to do that, and then within twenty-four hours, we'd have to go back there. So we addressed that concern with that approach.
Okay, so you have a, uh, for emergencies, then, what I'm hearing is that you have a, a minimum or maximum, I should say, of a twenty-four hour turnaround time to address?
For these temporary repairs, which are typically small piping near the meter, where the pressures are low, if it's a leak underground, we would typically replace the service that time, right away. I mean, we, we typically have people's, if, if it does happen, it's right until the night time if they have to.
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take it, we're gonna ask questions of the board first, and I'll open it up to the public, okay? Joe, do you have something?
Two things. I know one th- about VGG, this came up at our last meeting, is that there's still a lot of unknowns floating around with different decisions, uh, that were made with town meeting that was made, um, and, uh, findings from, from the, uh, from Land Court and also findings from the AG's office. So there's a lot of unknowns right now with that particular project. I'm not sure how that affects this, but I'm also very hesitant to act on anything that would, um, that would, and be, regards that because there's some different unknowns. And we're currently, uh, just, you were authorized to negotiate? Do you have the authorization, right? Just want to check on that.
Karen?
And through the chair, I, I want to thank Joe for bringing that up, because I share the same concerns. As I'm sure, I, I want to thank you all for your presentation. It was, it was very good. But as you probably know, um, there are a lot of moving parts to what's going on now. As you mentioned, and you know, VGG intends to purchase the land. They don't have that. They don't have any licenses or permits. So it, it would appear it's a bit premature to have you here right now. Um, do you have any comments about that? Do you need that? Like, the, you, you have to show evidence, and I'm quoting, evidence of support, town support?
Yes.
And I can tell you right now, given the results of the last couple of town meetings, um, I don't know that you really would have that. Now, that's all we have to use as our kind of guiding light right now, so we kind of have to go by, in my, in my opinion. So, um, I guess my question to you is, do you need to be here now? Because I do know the Planning Board is meeting to make some kind of determination on the site plan review. Correct me if I am using the wrong terminology.
No, that's there with, uh, in January, yes?
January second.
Division, yeah, the site. Thank you.
So do you need the letter? Do you need suppose, you need, what are you looking for, like, now?
Well, we had hoped for the, 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 um, approval now, only because, like any kind of filings, it takes a while to go through quite a bit of time. If we're going to, um, begin the process, we've got to do designing and, uh, and, and all those, uh, uh, send out a proposal for the design and the engineering and what that looks like. And so there's a lot of lead time in the process. That's kind of why we were hoping to move along now, but we, you know...
So just to through the chair?
The prime driver is that with the Massachusetts DPU, uh, when we, the, the timing associated with that is there's a five-month to nine-month review process by the Massachusetts DPU. So our hope was to meet with the board and to obtain the, uh, evidence of support so that that would accompany our filing, which we're planning on making in the next six weeks or so. By probably the end of January, early February is when we're planning to, to make that filing. And that would go through, then the Mass DPU would go through a five, six, eight months, nine-month review process. And our, our timing to, again, meet with our customers' request, uh, we wouldn't actually start construction until after obtaining the Mass DPU approval with, you know, and that obviously depends on the filing and the timing of that filing. So there wouldn't be any actual construction until after approval.
Well, and, uh, until permits and licenses. I mean, there's a lot of things that have to be, and through, so through the chair, what I'm hearing is that it is not mandatory right now. And understand our position, um, again, if you want evidence of town support, you may get evidence, maybe, I don't know, of a few selectmen supporting you, but that is not evidence of town support. Um, and so that's where I'm coming from.
So, Devon, I think you had something, got it?
Thank you. If I'm hearing your timeline correctly, you have quite a long timeline. You know, you're talking five to nine months. Would it be difficult for you to come back in a month? Because a month from now, we should have some indication how the Land Court will rule on this. There's a summary judgment hearing the first week in January. The Planning Board will meet again, I believe, the first week in January. Thank you. Would it be difficult for you to, to allow us time to resolve some of these issues and have, have you come back in January?
We'd be pleased to come back.
Thank you.
Mr. Saffo?
In addition to a lot of logistical, uh, considerations with this proposal and future proposals, I would move that we authorize town administration to continue negotiations through, throughout that time as well?
I don't think there's any negotiation, is there? It's, this is just...
Could you speak up, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
I don't believe that there's any negotiation taking place in this. This is just a letter of, of support for them to build a me, basically, and, and a huge, uh, not huge, but an oversized meter station for VGG with the possibility of expansion for the town later on. If, if the board decides to move that way and, and they find it economically affordable to move that way. So I believe, uh, right, right now, probably the best thing to do is wait, that, and this is my opinion, is to wait until we see how things shake out in Land Court. And then, uh, we've had the presentation already. We would put it back on the agenda as, you know, as an, as an issue under old business if anybody's looking to know what it would be.
I would, I would say, um, we can, probably the fifteenth, I would put it under the old, under old business, number fifteen. And then I know this gentleman had a question. Go ahead, mister.
I have a question. One I'd like to, just mentally anyway, to buy a utility for the town of Charlton to VGG. And what I would like, uh, I'm Jerry Dobell, one seventy-six Renton Road in Charlton. I also worked for the gas company for thirty-six years. I have no relationship to these gentlemen. We didn't work, I was from gas and ever-source and, and stock. And one of the things I did do was work in distribution. And I did the planning and estimating and all that. So I, I would be interested in the town having a gas utility exclusive of VGG being a customer. At that point, I'm sure that there's a lot of places in town that would have gas. I would be interested in seeing what pipelines are coming out, because it'd be coming off a take into a, that particular customer. It'd have an easement from that customer down to Martin Station Road roughly, I guess. And at a certain size, you certainly want to have a big enough pipeline to serve the customers. And I'd also be interested, one of the battles I always had, is having lines large enough so the next few years, you can't make a line, you can't put a thirty-six inch line and wait for it. You better put in an appropriate sized line. But I would like to see information as far as just gas utilities in Charlton exclusive of any particular customer. I'd be interested in that. I would presume you're probably running a sixty-pound line and the general line, and the general lines?
The plan would be a ninety-nine pound line.
Ninety-nine, and using plastic?
It would be plastic.
E two?
It would be a high-density polyethylene.
That was my comments and...
Thanks, Jerry. I, I was gonna introduce anyway. And Jerry's also on the Finance Committee and on the, uh, on Municipal Building Committee, sits on that, yeah. Ms. Craver?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify the negotiation component. This board, um, authorized me to negotiate with a gas company for a town-wide, um, distribution center. We have, we originally started talking to... We have, we originally started talking to, um, Liberty at the LNG company. Um, my conversations as far as VGG, um, they have offered to set a, um, the tap as they spoke of tonight, tonight. Um, the good part about that is, is that we wouldn't have to pay the monies, and I think he spoke that, which would be passed through if we did it on our own. Um, and I think that that, I heard the number of a million dollars or something that would have gotten passed for the tap, everything, for the planning and putting the tap.
Uh, it's more than that.
It's significantly, significant funds. Um, so, just in regards of negotiation, I'm not negotiating with them at this point. I have asked them if they will put in writing some, um, some of the requ, things that they're stating, such as that that wouldn't get passed through us, um, and what would be the relationship, and I am still working with them on that.
And just to clarify, that's what I was alluding to, is that when they, obviously, you know, make sure the agreements are, you know, worked out.
So, so... Uh, sure, Joe.
Thank you. Um, obviously, you mentioned Lawrence, John, that's a big concern, I'm just being right, ninety Osgood Road, it's a big concern. If you built this connection for VGG, where would your closest crew be located?
Well, our plan is that we would find a local qualified first responder, well, with at least a couple of people that could respond here, because we would follow up from our Fall River facility, and we would have qualified local first responders to respond to an emergency. And mind you, we still have the capability to shut a town remotely.
So, Joe?
So you're direct, just to follow up. So, Fall River is your closest, in the area of Fall River is your closest direct badge crew?
Our employees, yes.
Right, so it would be roughly two plus hours?
Well, that's why we would have a vendor here that would be fully qualified, that could respond to a lot.
Joe, just a little bit, probably because they don't want to mention any names, but there is a contractor in Auburn that does that for numerous utilities. Um, they're very big, they're currently, they have probably two hundred crews up in Lawrence right now. Um, so that's just one. And there's, there's, I, I know four. And, and different gas companies use the same technique. So, my, my, one of, one of my questions, which I did forget to bring, to bring up, was the, you know, uh, automation's great, what, what is the manual shutdown for this system? In other words, what would, what would be the pressure, what pressure relief would, would kick, kick the system off? You know, what, 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 let's say overpressurization?
One of the things you, they may probably want to put in, overpressurization, an excess oil valve, you might call it, especially at ninety-nine pounds. But I expect your whole system would be one pressure.
It'd be, the plan would be one pressure to avoid regulating that with system. And the station would be designed with overpressure protection plus pressure regulation. And the way we operate, we would have that maximum level of ninety-nine pounds, but we were operated closer to ninety. And the overpressure protection would be at ninety-nine, so it would respond if the pressure was to increase greater than ninety, plus that this remote ability to shut down is another part of the design.
So, I guess that the, my, my thing with the board is, we're gonna put it under old business on the fifteenth, and we'll see what shakes out at the rest of things.
Can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
So, this plant is in front of us, in front, in front of a planning board, and the power plant is being allowed because it's only an accessory use. So it's only providing enough power to supply VGG. And I have asked for, I'm waiting on a calculation to see how much power they actually need as, as a condition of approval, um, so I don't understand how they could now sell electricity from an accessory use.
No, no, Patsy, you're, you're looking at electricity, this...
I'm sorry, sell power, sell gas, or, or...
So, so what you're looking at is, what you, what you're looking at at the planning board right now, is what you, what you regulate, which is, they want to put up a co-gen facility on their, on their property to, to power up their, to power up their, their, um...
The electric.
Their electric system, okay? The, the, to, to supply the co-gen electric facility to run it. That comes under the Department of Public Utilities to provide the fuel, okay? You, you, I, I believe you don't have really, and, and you don't have a component on that. You have a component on what VGG's trying to say about the cogeneration.
If they begin to sell power, it's no longer an accessory use.
But they're not selling power.
Or selling gas, or, or...
They're not selling anybody anything. The util, no, no, excuse me. The, the utility, the utility would have to go to the Department of Public Utilities again, and they would have to say that we want to become the gas provider, they would become the gas provider, tapping off of the Tennessee Gas Pipeline to provide gas to the town of Charlton.
They need an agricultural zone?
It's, utilities are exempt from where they can put, the same as the sewer treatment plant, the same as water, the same as electricity.
What if the plan avoid, didn't allow the power plant as high of, as a condition for approval?
Well, then they, then they don't have a customer. Then these guys don't have a customer, and they don't do it. But you're looking at an ancillary, you're looking at an ancillary use, which I believe Attorney Bobrovsky has told you, and, correct me if I'm wrong, the co-gen is, is, and we're getting way off base here. Okay, so, I think, I think what I'm...
The thing with, please don't write a support letter until it gets through...
Well, that, that's fine, and that's what we're, and that's what we're gonna do, okay? So, go ahead.
You know, Patsy, one of the things that, what they're before the town tonight is about a support letter regarding VGG. It is not about designing the town. As a matter of fact, they're not going to put anything in there necessarily about asking to have more than one customer, so when they go to the utilities, they're only asking for one customer. We're also working with the LNG company to also put a tap, so that we may have choice. So at this time, you know, regarding what they're doing, it's really about VGG and then the possibility later on down the road, if the town wants to have them come in and facilitate, and that's again where Joe was talking about the negotiations and having conversations further.
Okay. So, so, right now, what, what the, what the board's intent is, is to put this back on our agenda on the fifteenth, after we see, uh, what takes place with the, uh, court case and what takes place at the planning board. Um, Jerry?
Mr. John Gerard Russell, sixty-three, Olester Road. I'm just curious, if this were to happen, what would be the initial build-out for the gas company in terms of infrastructure, and then maybe phase two, phase three down the road, ten years? What does the company envision as a, as a business plan for a serving town of Charlton?
We do not as yet have a business plan, we would need to take a look at about a couple of factors, one of which is, what is the demand? Is, is, it, it's, putting pipe in the ground is quite expensive, and we would need to make sure that we have enough folks that would sign up, and we would have enough load, and we could calculate what, what that would do, and then we look at the construction cost and, and basically, if, if there was a match and there was enough demand, and we could tie in bigger loads with smaller loads and combine those, and then take a look at it, and then, uh, create a plan, but that's a little bit further down the road than we are right now.
And that would require, that would require a separate filing through the Department of Public Utilities as well.
Yeah, we'd want to do, is there the demand, what would the cost be, take a look at that, then if it looked like that might work, then we'd need to do a filing with the DPU on, on much more beyond that one single customer.
Just one follow-up. Certainly, I would think that the company would be interested with the proximity of three schools, one of them very large, that they would be potential customers.
Hmm, oh, yeah. I mean, we, we very aggressively try to grow our system, and one of the advantages, if you look at Fall River, it's a, it's a city, it's very densely populated, and we have almost complete gas saturation there, almost everything. But it's, the geography, it works very well. Here, the geography's a little bit more spread out, so we need to sharpen our pencil as we go through that exercise.
That's one of the advantages of the greenhouse, heading for the initial meter station, makes the economic hurdle much less.
Hmm. Laurie?
Um, I just want the board to be very, very careful. Again, I'm thinking out five or ten years, they come in here as an accessory use, it would be wonderful if the town was piped for natural gas, but we all know, we're almost forty-four square miles with lots of ledge, we can't even get FiOS to come to town, and it's taken years for sewer. So I think you need to look outside the box and realize when cannabis drops, we are going to have a natural gas power plant, we are gonna have three then. So I just don't want Charlton to turn into the New Jersey of Massachusetts, where we're gonna, we're gonna take one for the team, and the team is the state. I need you guys to just promise you're gonna look out for those of us that live here, it's not about the money, this isn't allowed in that zone, I know you say you're exempt.
Laurie, excuse me, we're getting way off track here, okay?
I agree.
This is, this is way off track, um, so I think we're gonna end the discussion here now. Um, Mr. Smith? Yes.
Just one question on, uh, I don't understand, wouldn't it be a, a bidding process for the town to have a gas supplier around the pipes to the town? I mean, it, it's a pretty lucrative contract to have ever-source or natural grid or someone, just being a contractor myself, if you had a, you had a big plant there, and it just gave you the, why would it give you the authority to solely be the distributor of gas in the town of Charlton?
But, but, right, right now, we're, we're putting the cat before the horse, okay? So, what, what they, what, yeah, no, no, what, what they, what they, what they're here, what they're here for right now is, yeah, no, no, and thank you, but I think, I think what I, what I'd rather do is, I'd rather have this on, let's see what shakes out, okay? And where we go with VGG, because that's their, that's why they're here tonight. They want to put, they want to do a gas tap on the Tennessee Pipeline to supply VGG's cogeneration plant with gas, natural gas, instead of having an oil-fired plant or a propane-fired plant. And that, that's, that's why they're here. So I think what the board has talked about is, we're gonna put it on the January fifteenth meeting, it will be under the, uh, old business section of the agenda. And, uh, I believe that's where we're gonna go with this. So, um, you know, I'd just like to thank you all for coming out and doing the presentation. Uh, Mike, you were here, I want to say, a few years ago, and did a presentation, uh, for us before. Uh, we do understand that Libby has the, uh, you know, interest in the town of Charlton, and we appreciate that. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time.
Very appreciate.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
We appreciate your patience, too.
No, no problem, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll go get David.
Yep. All right, let's see. All righty. He did? Good.
It's awesome. Hey, David, I have a gift for the hospital for the town of Charleston.
Thank you, yeah. We'll be all the time.
So don't leave, don't leave before I get to.
David, I have a toy right here.
So thank, so thank you too. Thank you from the kids at the hospital.
All right.
Joe, be back momentarily. Let's see. It's too heavy.
Thank you, yes, she says her car is filled.
Ms. Crave?
Yes, sir.
Let's start.
The planning board has provided you, um, with a copy of a special permit submitted to them by Jessica Bernier at eleven King Road, Charlton, Mass, for approval of a one-reduced frontage lot containing approximately six point one-five acres for purposes of building a single-family home. The assessor's map is seventy-nine, block C, lot one point one-four, and is in an agricultural district. If you have, um, you're asked to review and provide any comments, if, and if any, no later than Tuesday, January first.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any comments?
Does anybody have any comments on this? Plan's been sitting in the, uh, office? Nope, no, no comments.
Let them know, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Crave?
Yes, sir. The following is a list of liquor licenses to be renewed by the board for the year of two thousand and nineteen. Charlton Beagle Club Incorporated, Shri Somoth Incorporated, doing business as Country Farms, Kanaghi Incorporated, doing business as Charlton Country Store, Plan Plow Realty Corporation, doing business as Heritage Country Club, Omar Martini Incorporated, uh, doing business as Charlton Food Mart, Tomaski Trading Corporation, doing business as Ted's, Keg Incorporated, doing business as the Quarter Keg Pub, Zorbitz Pizzeria Tavern LLC, Treehouse Brewery Company Incorporated, and Kalula LLC, doing business as Swifty Liquor Mart. The liquor license inspections have been completed by the police, fire, and building departments, all are in compliance, with two establishments having minor issues to correct and are in the process of doing so. The recommendation is to approve all liquor license renewals for two thousand and nineteen. The total revenue from the liquor license renewals is eleven thousand fifty dollars.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Safarovic.
I move that we approve the liquor licenses as presented to us.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing Muncie, now, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Old business, we didn't have any, it looks like. Uh, any committee reports from?
Yes.
Ms. Noble?
As always. On December fifth, the Green Gold Group in North Brookfield, I believe it is, opened up the doors of their cultivation center to, um, officials from Charlton, police, fire, state police, from both Brookfield and Charlton. Uh, I was there, Todd Gerard was there, um, Jim Philbrook was there, from the director of the Board of Health, Bill Scanlon was there, Patricia Ridlack was there. Um, it was just an amazing facility. It's in the middle of a neighborhood, the houses were directly across the street, and it was very good for us to see a, a cultivation facility in full operation. A lot of us had concerns about odor, noise, appearance, there were no issues. And in fact, one of the gentlemen that works there in security lives close enough that he goes home every day for lunch and then walks back to work. So, we were in there, um, we saw where they're starting to build out, they're gonna be putting in kitchen facility, kitchen facilities in there, we went into the extraction rooms, cultivation, we couldn't actually go into the cultivation room, because that's a clean But being able to actually see a cultivation facility that's been up and running for quite some time was an eye-opener.
Okay.
And I found it very, very helpful.
Norrie?
Yes, absolutely.
Can you come to the microphone so we can capture? For the purpose of minutes?
Make way. Um, Norrie Smith, Jessup Hill Road, good evening. I'm just curious, how many square feet is that grow facility that you toured?
Oh, I would have to look that up for you, several thousand.
Couple thousand?
But I, I'll...
Okay, so it, it's a relatively small-sized facility?
It's, um, it's in what used to be a factory.
Mm-hmm.
And, well, the, um, the clone room and the grow, the grow room now are not as large as they would like to be, they will be adding more.
Okay, just because I understand the concerns that individuals have about the size of the...
Right.
...facility have an impact on noise and smell and...
There was no, there was, there was no noise.
Other, other problems.
There was absolutely no noise, it was, it was quiet as a mouse, and, in fact, there wasn't even any signage, you didn't know that you were at a cultivation... You didn't know that you were at a cultivation facility. Except when you tried to walk in the door, and there was extensive security.
So they didn't have a fence around the perimeter?
There is a fence around the perimeter.
Barbed wire?
But the fence, no, no barbed wire, the fence was there previously. And again, the closest houses were directly on the other side of the road.
I know there are other small facilities that, even at seven thousand square feet, maybe not just several, but seven thousand, they've had odor problems in the vicinity of the facility, so.
There were none.
Okay.
I think part of it is, Norrie, the, if they're running it as a clean-room facility, the, as long as the tonnage, and I think that's what the planning board is looking at now-
Definitely the size, right.
It's, as long as the tonnage of the air handling system and the purification system is, is adequate, then you don't run into these problems. And that's what, that's what I believe they found there. I, I used to, I used to do building clean-room facilities for the company I worked for. So, and that was, that was one of the things that you had to make sure the tonnage was correct.
Right.
In fact, even inside the building-
Yeah.
Unless you were in one of the rooms where they were doing extraction or growth, there was almost no odor.
Well, I would hope they'd have that taken care of. Otherwise, it'd be a tough place to work.
There's, there's a, a multi-layer, I believe it's four layers of air filtration. So they have the back of the house, which is where the growing, cultivation, extraction takes place. And then they have the front of the house, which is all administration. So when we were in the front of the house section-
Yeah.
Even in the, even in the building, there was no indication of what was growing in the back.
So the facility that you toured, did that have a co-gen plant on the site? Was it-
I don't believe so.
Producing its own electricity?
I don't believe so.
Okay, so it was smaller?
Yeah, just, just a comment, thank you for bringing that up, because I've been researching and reading, and thank you for going, I think that's really important that you-
It's been planning, we were there for over two hours.
But what I did learn, though, it is much smaller than, than VGG. I think, is it one-tenth? It's, it's smaller, and, and I know because of the whole odor thing, because I've been going to planning board meetings and watching, for them, and my understanding is, for, for VGG to get to that part, the good news is, it is possible, I guess, to do no odor, have no odor come out of the facility, however-
I don't think it's the-
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, so-
But, but it's because, it's, it would be like six to eight million dollars more they'd have to invest.
But again, I just, I wanted to-
I'm just curious.
Yeah, so, so the committee report is, is on, is on, you know, is on-
The site visit.
The site-
We went, we went to our, to the site visit.
I'm just curious.
No, you can't take pictures, absolutely not. No phones were allowed inside, security is incredibly high. But other than that, you know, it was, it was so educational, and I was so glad that so many members from the town could actually take the time to go.
Great.
The, so, and I'll go on to my committees' reports. The Municipal Building Committee met today, I wasn't able to attend it, but they're meeting regularly right now to look at the, to look at some of the things that, that we need to take care of at town meeting, for some, some of the needs that are taking place in this building, for, to, to help the Cemetery Commission overcome some of the problems they're having down at Westridge Cemetery. And also, we're looking at the DPW garage to consolidate a couple of, a couple of operations. With, so that was it for the Municipal Building Committee. Thursday morning at nine o'clock, the Public Safety Building Committee is meeting with the, the, a possible architect and the, and the vendor that we signed up for engineering services for the public safety building. And, and then I believe, you, did you have a meeting with the Sonic Home at all, or can you elaborate on that?
I did have a meeting with them. They, first, we did some conversation about the PNS, so we're going back and forth on that. I expect that to be finalized, it doesn't look like there's any major deal, deal breakers by the conversation. We also haven't caught, talked about the, the trail. There is actually an extensive trail system. And where we would like to put the trail with the adult exercise equipment is actually on the Sonic Home property. And she was rather excited that we may be able to do some partnering on that. I have been invited to attend their Board of Directors meeting on Friday morning, which I will be going to, and giving them an update on the town and the things that are happening. And we're gonna be looking for ways to do some partnering and working together.
Is there any, any other boards or committees that-
The, the Solar Moratorium Committee will be meeting the end of January. More to, I'll announce the date at the next meeting.
Excellent, thanks.
Oh, since you're talking about committees, if I may say, Technology Committee is working very hard on the website. We had a, a quick meeting today. We need the boards and committees, and we should probably make this very clear at the all boards and committees meeting, that they look at their website. So any, any of the committees that you're on, please ask them if they have a website, to take a look at their website, see if it's okay-
Mean a webpage, or?
That webpage.
Okay.
The page, the web, their webpage on our website.
Okay.
And just a, through the chair, a quick question about the all boards meeting. A while back, we had talked about inviting, extending an invitation to the school committee? School committees? And I didn't know if that was done, I don't remember-
I'll check that.
If not, thank you, I appreciate that.
I know we've talked about it.
Yeah.
Thanks, Karen, for bringing that up.
I can't believe I remembered it.
Somebody has to remember.
I didn't even write that one down.
Usually, it's Mary and Robin. It's not I. So are there any other boards and committee reports? Seeing on policy review, Ms. Kramer, you wanna go over what we did with the policy review?
We are still in the process of doing your minutes from the policy review meeting that you had.
Mm-hmm.
So if you're okay with it, I'd rather do it at the next meeting and have that ready, so, because you had asked me to do some drafting of the policies.
Thank you.
Once the minutes are done.
There is no student select person report this evening?
Um, Mr. Chair?
Ms. Noble?
Could we reach out to Anya and see how she's doing? She's missed the last few meetings.
She did email and, and said that there was something that was going on that she needed to attend, and she was extremely sorry for it. So we have been in touch with her.
Okay, good, good, I was just concerned.
Sent her regards.
Town administrators report?
Yes, sir. No-shave Wednesday. The Charlton Police Officers, as you know, Matt, the chief came in and talked about this at your last meeting, participated in no-shave November and raised fourteen hundred dollars to support awareness, education, and support for patients. Fighting the battle against post-traumatic stress, PTS, traumatic brain injury, and other invisible wounds of war experienced by our returning service members and their families. The total monies raised for the veteran services at Mass General Hospital by the Red Sox Foundation home-based program was two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Officers who participated in this important cause included Gary Mason, Steve Medel, Gary Wood, Tim Smith, Jason Martaci, Derek Gaylord, Jason White, Chris Burtz, Dan Hanks, Tim Bullock, Bill Broldry, Sean Baxter, Paul Morelli, and Jordan Ryan. On November twenty-eighth, officers Martaci, Gaylord, White, and Baxter traveled to Fendaway Park to present the Charlton Police Department's donation to the Red Sox Foundation home-based program. You may have seen that on the, the news. Recreation Commission, we were notified that Denton Hutchins resigned from the Recreation Commission due to moving out of town. We have put the opening on cable, the town's website and town hall bulletin board. We will notify you when any letters of interest are received. Traffic Enforcement and Equipment Program, the Charl- Charlton Police Department has been selected to receive a traffic enforcement and equipment program grant, up to ten thousand dollars, from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, Office of Grants and Research, Highway Safety Division. This award is for direct campaigns during the National Drive Sober or Get Pulled Over mobilization scheduled through the holiday season, as well as the Winter Impair Driving Focus, now through March thirty-first. These monies reimburse the cost of overtime to put extra officers on the street to ensure safe and sober travels on our roadways. A special thank you to Lieutenant Dowd for working diligently through the application process to secure these funds for the town. And I know that's been of extreme interest to you. The Southbridge landfill, I received a notice that the Southbridge landfill received a demand for stipulation penalties issued by Mass DEP in the amount of a hundred and two thousand dollars for multiple violations on multiple days, including creation of nuisance odors, exposed waste, and litchy discharges. Southbridge landfill was given permission to work on the corrective actions, so the sooner the exposed waste is properly covered, the sooner the odor should subside. Mass DEP has been conducting more frequent unannounced inspections at the landfill, even though the third-party consultant has been on-site, because the numerous complaints after the landfill stopped accepting waste. It appears from the third-party reports that the monitor has not been on-site as frequently for the required period of time. Mass DEP has made it clear to them that the monitor must be present, as agreed to, in the most recent order of conditions. But they plan to continue their inspections, both to observe the work and verify compliance. The schedule for completing the work, closing landfill is no later than, completing, completing the work is no later than December twenty-first.
So I, I would like to add something to that. Because I live completely on the other side of town, and I don't, up until the winter season started, I haven't traveled over to the town of Sturbridge. I, during the winter season, I've been, I've been working in Sturbridge so far, it stinks. I mean, it smells like methane over there. It's traveling as far down as Sturbridge Village. And I don't know how our residents, the residents of Southbridge or residents of Sturbridge are putting up with this. I mean, you know, it's, it's absolutely ludicrous that they're getting away with this. I mean, Casella has to do something, and DEP has to keep their, 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 their feet to the fire, because, you know, if I was living over there, I would be, I would be irate. And, and our citizens and the citizens of the other two towns deserve much better, much better treatment than that.
I can tell you that the director of the Worcester Office of DEP did come, had, and had a meeting with the res, our residents, when they ordered them to close it. And our residents were told that it would get worse before it got better, because they have to open up the layers to put the liner on. So when they start opening it up, you're absolutely right. It's the smell that's just very, very bad. So hopefully, they will get that completed quickly.
Sorry to interrupt you.
No worries. Also, just since we're talking about the landfill, I have had some complaints from some of the residents. As you know, we have an agreement with Casella so that they, our residents can take their trash to Oxford Transfer Station, because the Southbridge Transfer Station closed down. And I've had a couple of complaints that they are not taking yard waste. I have found that they are not set up to take the yard waste, so that will not be possible. But I also found out that one of our residents was charged for a bulky item, and we did not receive any charges at the landfill. So I have contacted and reached out to John Casella, the owner of Casella, to see if he can get that remedied. So if people are watching at home, we are working and trying to help them out, we hear them. Next would be Chapter Seventy and Seventy-One funding. Bay Path has notified us that the final FY two thousand and nineteen state budget included additional Chapter Seventy and Seventy-One funding for them. The final state budget also caused the minimum contribution levels to change for all of their member towns. Bay Path Committee has voted to reduce the assessments of their ten-member towns by a total of a hundred and seventy-five thousand, a hundred and twenty-four dollars. This will reduce our payments that are due by March first and June first. So we're thankful that they're returning. As you know, in general, Dudley Charlton keeps that money and puts it into their ED fund, and then uses that at, at budget season. DCR Massachusetts, we have been notified by the Department of Conservation and Recreation that owners of significant hazard potential dams prepare emergency action plans. We are required to prepare, prepare emergency action plans for Prindle Lake Dam, Little Nugget Dam, and Granite Lake Dam. Conservation Agent Todd Gerard will be working to complete this. And that's all I have at this time.
Any questions for the town administrator on her report? Okay. Sir, did you, we're going to other business?
Oh, we do, I do have one more thing that I did want to tell you. Tobacco products. We have been notified by the Board of Health that effective January first, two thousand and nineteen, a person must be twenty-one years of age to purchase tobacco products. This is a change from eighteen to twenty-one, mandated by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and will be a Board of Health regulation.
I have a question, because in the news for the last month, there's been all sorts of things about vaping and the accessibility of the vaping products and the appliance itself to, to, and I'm gonna call them children, eighteen-years-old. Is there something that we have to do locally to make sure that, that that is not the case? That everything is twenty-one-years-old? And who, who is responsible for that? Is that us, or is it the Board of Health?
I think it's the Board of Health, and I would, that's a really good question. And perhaps you would like to invite the board or the health agent to come and talk to you about that, and see if there's any ways that we can work with the Board of Health to assist them?
I, I would be, I would also be interested if the Board of Health has any funds that they can go into the schools, you know, that we have in town, and, and explain to the kids the dangers of, of this, of this, I'm gonna call it a hab.
If I may just expand in kind of what you're saying, John. It would be wonderful if we could use our website as a teaching tool for, whether we're talking about vaping, or just even having links, like if you went to the Board of Health, you could go to a, a site at the state agency to deal with, fill in the blank. We all know, too, we're also in, still in the opioid crisis, things like that. I know in other communities, the departments or committees are a little bit more active, and their website is utilized more that way. So we don't, nothing, nothing we have to do right now, but just looking to the future, it might be something we want to do now that we have kind of a new-
I think that's something that, not to interrupt, I think it's something that should definitely be brought up to the Technology Committee, as they're working to revamp the town's website to, because that's one of the reasons we wanted to do it, was to make it more inclusive and user-friendly.
We're moving on to other business, does the board have anything on the other business? Sir, I, I saw you come up, did you have something that you wanted to talk about?
I have endless things that I want to talk about. Not here.
Whatever, okay, excellent, thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
We've motioned with a second.
Just a, were we supposed to accept someone's resignation? Did I, like?
Not yet.
No.
Not yet, but yes, thank you, I saw that in there, too.
All right, I just thought-
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Happy holidays.
Yeah, happy holidays. Merry Christmas.